Thank you for everybody, everybody for coming this evening. Let's start off this evening with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city licenses, you can see there. Is that coming up? Yeah. Anderson Plumbing LLC out of Iola, Lloyd Bilters out of Ottawa, Kansas, Fredrickson Lawn Mowing here in town, and Wagon Tail Dog Grouping here in town as well. So we'll have two appointments. Two terms have expired to the downtown art and cultural advisory boards. We're taking applications for that, correct?
Yeah, I'll get those posted.
Okay. And then we'll take those until the first of May. Is that correct?
Yeah.
First week of May. That way we can look at them for the May meeting. So anybody that's interested in a downtown art and culture advisory board, please submit your applications, please. Then the consent agenda. There's actually only two items there, item A and item B. Pretty simple one. We haven't seen that for a long time, have we?
No, never.
Any comments about the consent agenda? Then entertain a motion, then we approve the consent agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ready for item C, which is public hearings. First public hearing, an open public hearing then for 1009 North Seventeenth Place. And for the commission, we have three options on these, on this 1009 North Seventeenth and 1201 West Main. We can adopt a resolution condemning the structures as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal, adjourn a public hearing to a date and specific time, or take no action. Don?
Yes, how are you guys doing?
Great.
It would be staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution condemning the structure as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal.
Have we had contact with the owner?
Yeah, she's here tonight if she wishes to speak.
I know. That's what we're going to do.
What'd she say?
We might forget it.
Oh. Yeah, that's good. All right. Any discussion from the commission then? Then I close that hearing. Anybody want to make a motion then that we condemn the structure at 1009 North Seventeenth Place as dangerous and unsafe? I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution placing 1009 North Seventeenth as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue removal or repair. Would there be a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Open hearing then for 1201 West Main. Don?
Yeah, it's staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution condemning this structure as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal.
Have we had anybody here?
I do not see the owner here tonight.
Okay. Have you had contact with the owner?
We've sent out a letter. We haven't had any response to that letter, but previous, 60 days ago, she said that she would take that out and had provided, was going to provide funds to take that out to do that, but she's not done that yet.
To remove the structure?
To remove the structure, yes.
Okay. Questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So I'll close the hearing for 1201 West Main. What's the commission's pleasure on this one?
I'd say move forward.
I'd say move forward too. Entertain a motion to...
I make a motion that we declare 1201 West Main as dangerous and unsafe and proceed with condemnation.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded for 1201 to be, West Main to be condemned. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Don. All right. Item D is presentation from the tree board regarding plans for Arbor Day 2017.
Hello, I'm Wesley Fox, the chairman of the tree board. And the tree board wants to ask for your approval on our plan to revive the independence tradition of the Arbor Day celebration. We want to have our celebration on April 29th from noon to 2:00 PM at the Fountain and Riverside Park. We want to begin with a few speeches. We'd like to ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you would give the first speech and welcome and open the...
He'd love to.
Hooray, thank you.
What is, I was looking for the date. I knew you were going to...
Oh, it's April 29th.
April 29th.
Mm-hmm. It's on the little flyer piece paper in front of you that I...
I was looking for the date. Figured you'd ask that question.
It's the last Saturday in April.
Yeah.
Which is also love independence.
Let me look here. That's love Independence Day. That'd be a good day.
Would be.
Okay. All right. What time?
From noon to 2:00.
Noon to 2:00. Okay. I'll be there.
Okay, thank you. And then we were going to follow that with...
There it is right there.
...a couple of other speeches, one given by Jacob Weber from the KU Extension Office, and one given by Rachel Lyon. Then Josh Umholtz has been working with Rusty Arnold, putting together an art contest with the elementary school, with the K through 6th grade. They're going to choose winners of the art contest to help Rachel Lyon plant two cherry trees near the fountain at Riverside Park. So we're going to do that at Arbor Day. Also, we're going to display the artwork done by the schoolchildren at Arbor Day. Then we're going to hand out 75 red bud trees to the public for free, along with educational materials about basic tree stewardship. The funds for the trees are going to be provided by Romans. We're also going to have educational displays provided by TLC Nursery, the Independence Science and Technology Center, the Fab Lab, and the Independence Garden Center. They're not going to be selling anything, they're just going to be providing educational materials about trees. They're going to provide their own displays. We'd also like to have tree-related snacks for the public, such as apples and pears. We wanted to ask for a budget of $200 for refreshments for the apples and pears to be given out, if that would be possible.
From the city?
Yes, please.
That's much trickier.
Okay.
Well, to be honest, it's a great noble project. I think it's good. I don't want you to, I don't want this to come off cold or anything, but I kind of hesitate to do that because then when other people have issues, we'll be giving out $200 to everybody.
Oh, okay. Well, we can, we can look for funds elsewhere.
So if you can do some fundraising, I think that would be a good way to go about it.
No trouble.
Okay?
Certainly.
I don't know what you guys...
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay.
I mean, hope you understand.
We do, yes.
Okay.
But very exciting stuff.
Thank you.
This is good.
This is great. When we formed the tree board a year ago, I didn't know what to expect, but I didn't expect this.
See, I don't, this is, I've been on here now for four years. I don't remember doing this before.
Well, we just formed the tree board last year.
So I'm excited that this is...
This is good, good stuff.
Good project.
Excellent, thank you all.
I can't wait for your Fred speech.
What are some other plans that the tree board has in mind?
Other than Arbor Day?
A lot of people have asked, what is the tree board do? What are you...
The, my understanding is that the tree board is mostly advisory, so we're not making any new ordinances or anything, but we are going, we are applying for Tree City USA is our other main project, so that Independence can become a Tree City USA.
Which is, is that a state organization or is, that's, USA means it's a national organization?
Yes, that's a national organization.
Is it a state, some sort of...
It's through the Arbor Day Foundation, I believe, isn't it?
Is it? Okay.
Do you have any other events planned?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to approve it?
I think we need to approve the Arbor Day celebration for April 29th, 2017, at the fountain, at Riverside Park. I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did very good. You were nervous. Don't blame you. All right. Items for commission action. Consider proclamation declaring April 17th as child abuse prevention month. Yours. Okay. April, yeah. Are you...
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you for considering, for planning April's Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I wanted to tell everyone about an event that's to sponsor a local child abuse prevention program. It's our first year having this fundraiser, and it's called Cherish Our Children. Nick, hopefully, he's already got it already. The chairs are displayed at the bike shop, and it's children's chairs who have been painted by local artists with park theme. And so we're going to have it the morning, it's going to be a live auction that you can purchase the chairs, and it will be the morning before park opening. So you can come get pancakes at the Riverside, at the 4-Holding Riverside Park, and then buy chairs at our auction. And the funds will go to our local child abuse prevention program called Healthy Families. So I just wanted to tell you guys about that, and thank you for considering this proclamation. And I have lawyers about it, and I'm going to be there some night.
Do you have a copy of the proclamation? I mean, I'm happy to read it if you do. If you don't...
Yeah, she, you have one to be signed?
Oh.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Okay, let me read it real quickly. As you can see there, it says, "Whereas children are the key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are a most valuable resource, they are also the most, are most vulnerable. Whereas children have a right to be safe and be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas's families, thus preventing a far-fetched effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building a foundation of communities. And whereas, we must come together as partners so that the voices of the children are heard by all, and we are a community extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this nation and state." That's very good. And then we did that because I don't think people at home can see that, so we appreciate that, so...
There's the...
There it is. You gotta give me permission first.
After to get permission.
Yeah. So would there be a motion then to consider April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Okay, thank you. All right. Consider proclamation declaring April 2017 as Fair Housing Month.
I think April's already taken now, right?
She, is she here?
She is here. She's hiding back there.
Who is she?
We are more than happy to share the month of April with another great cause. I would ask the commission to read and impact and impose this proclamation declaring April 2017 as Fair Housing Month, so that the citizens understand their rights and responsibilities under fair housing.
Okay. You want to read it, or you want me to read it? Go ahead.
You have a great voice, Mr. Mayor. Go right ahead.
Whereas, the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VII, Title VIII declared that the law of the land will now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas the city of Independence is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws, and whereas the fair housing groups and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many to have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. And equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can be, can and should be achieved. So would there be a motion then to approve this proclamation?
I move that we proclaim April 2017 as Fair Housing Month in Independence.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we're good. April's going to be a busy month for everybody. Okay. We are ready to go to item G, which is consider reviewing the condition of the following structures previously condemned as dangerous and unsafe. Don?
Yes, 412 North 19th Street. Because the inspection wasn't able to be scheduled till this week, it's on the agenda, but we have met with Pat. He is here tonight. He is on schedule, doing repairs. Things are moving along. We're very pleased with him. I appreciate him being here tonight and his efforts. At this time, we would just like to take no action and continue moving, have him moving forward with the repairs that he's undergoing.
Okay. So we're doing well then?
Yes, we're doing well.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Then 909 East Hill.
Yes. This property had a fire, has been removed by the owner. I have checked and are happy with the way that it's been removed and reseated, so we would like for, to recommend that staff be authorized to rescind condemnation, well, that rescind condemnation action on this property as it's meet, smet the requirements that we've set forth. So that's our recommendation on that.
Policy.
Right.
Okay? Yes. Fantastic. So you're happy, so we're good?
We're happy. I'm always happy.
There you go.
But I'm especially happy with this.
Okay. All right, questions from the commission on 909 East Hill? Okay. Entertain the motion to rescind the condemnation action.
I'll move, yes. I'll move that we rescind condemnation on 909 East Hill.
I'd second that motion. All those in favor, please, any more comments?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All right. Item H is consider orders for downtown curb ramps, change orders for downtown curb. Mr. Shaw?
Yes. City previously approved a change order price to add parallel, or excuse me, perpendicular curb ramps downtown. During construction, it became evident there's seven of these that really wouldn't work, meet ADA standards. So in discussion with the previous city manager, we prepared a change order to take those out, and the, my understanding at the time, they'd be added back in on a case-by-case basis because they're going to be quite a bit more expensive for those seven. And as part of the downtown patching project, I know one that there had been a complaint about, had been discussed with him about adding it back on with that project. So there's a second change order to add a ramp at 100 West Main that's a perpendicular, or I mean a parallel ramp in that location. And it's basically because the existing sidewalk in those locations, that location is very steep, and it would create a curb when we build the ramp, and there's a tripping hazard, we have to put a rail on that curb. So it's fairly expensive to build that ramp, but it's a change order for, I believe...
$6,114?
Yeah, $6,114 for that one compared to $2,400 for the originals. That is the biggest difference. So there's...
Is that on the north side of Main?
Yes, yes.
That's where my office is. I did not request this, just so everybody knows.
Well, I think there's a, there is, some people use the alley, but that's not a legal, a legal ramp. Sometime ago, there was a handicap parking spot put there, but it really doesn't meet ADA requirements.
Okay. What part's not compliant, the street, or is it cross slope, or where's the problem?
On the existing handicap parking spot.
Yeah, on the ramp that is to be put in.
What, you mean why we couldn't do the original plan?
Right.
The cross slope of the sidewalk is such that we could, we'd have to replace all the way to the building to get that to work, and the sidewalk is so steep because the elevation between the curb and the doors into some of those buildings are set. So really, the sidewalk needs to be split, like shown in our sketch, our isometric sketch, to make all that work and switch the type of ramp.
I guess I was surprised to see that the seven had been eliminated because we did the transitional plan that indicated where the problem sidewalks were, and then what it appears that none of that was considered when we did the initial change order. It was just like putting dots on a map, but yet we paid for a transitional plan that the information was available at the time, and, but yet we go ahead and indicate ramps like we didn't pay for a transitional plan. It's, you know, we had Doug Pickard looked at the conditions downtown, identified all this, but, you know, I see us spending money, but we're not getting anything for it. We're back to square one every time.
I know in some of Doug Pickard's ideas for downtown, they've included splitting the sidewalk in some locations essentially like that ramp would do. And I, I don't know, I don't recall in the transition plan, maybe it does, but I don't recall it specifically saying that this ramp would be required here, that this type of ramp would be here and that type would be elsewhere.
It identified, the transition plan, when it was done, identified that block as cross slope problems. So, you know, it would appear to me that when we ask to put the curb ramps in, that that would have been considered, so instead of putting in a ramp, or showing one, or us pricing one that doesn't work, that would have been the time for us to address it. And I know at this location here at the Advanced Physical Therapy, city staff had looked at it before that was done, they, the business had requested a handicap ramp there, and, you know, it's, I guess, I don't see what we're getting when we pay for studies, but we don't get the recommendation at the time. It's like, here we are, we found a problem that was identified, but it keeps going on, that now we make another change, and, you know, why, why aren't the, why isn't the investigation being done at the time we put the ramps in, not after they start to install them?
Well, it's, it's not uncommon to build off of standards, and that's what we did here. Do I wish we would have had a price for a parallel ramp also when we first did it? Sure I do, but, but, I mean, obviously, we did not. So that's why, purpose of the change orders.
Yeah. I think in the future, we need to use our information, and when we come with a recommendation and to do work, it needs to be correct. We just don't keep paying to redo things. If we paid to identify the spots for the ramps, the 24 ramps initially, then we should have confirmed that they all worked there. Now we're back paying again for a ramp that has to be redesigned, so in that location, we're conceivably paying twice to get one.
Well, we didn't, we didn't design any of these ramps, basically we're out, we're building them in the field off standards. And that, we didn't do any survey for that, you're right. We did the transition plan as a separate document, and again, I wish I would have bid both types of ramps to have a price for each, but we didn't do it that way.
But whoever the tech was that indicated the location, that's kind of their, you can't be everywhere, but your techs need to learn that they've got a responsibility to us to make it work the first time, not keep writing. Because even in, I went back to the notes and looked at the letter we were submitted, and it gives the impression that the standard ramp would work. And, you know, we need to go with the, we need the ramp put in, we just needed it done right the first time.
The ramp needs to go, so we need to, is this two separate order, or motions?
Yes.
It would be two separate motions, correct?
We need, we need the first one to remove the seven curb ramps, and for a reduction of $16,800 would be the first one.
That project hasn't been closed out yet?
Yeah, that, that project is being closed out, right?
Yeah, we have not submitted the final payment yet, so reflect the change order if you choose to do that.
And then the new curb ramp will be on another project, the downtown repairs.
I saw that. The first was on the 13th Street.
Right.
Which, you know, there again, I see your letters were dated December 16th, and now we're just getting it in March.
So we entertain a motion then to approve the change order, the first change order for the reduction of $16,800 for the seven ramps. Would there be a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of that change order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the second would be the additional change order for the West Main location for $6,114. Would there be a motion for that?
Wait, you said you didn't bid that one, right?
We did not bid that type.
So how did that price come about?
Well, we asked, we asked for a change order amount to do that type of ramp.
So the contractor gave us that price?
Correct.
Think it's reasonable?
Yes, it's expensive, and if you look at it, about $2,000 is in the railing, and that's, that's a common price. It seems ridiculously high for railing, but that's, that's a common price for it.
Is there any requirement that on that rail have a guard, since there's a curb there parallel to it, so wheelchair or walker?
I believe so, and I believe that's what he has in his bid, the curb rail. He has a curb rail in his price. It's not shown on my sketch, but...
There will be a guard to keep...
Yes.
...a stroller, a wheelchair, or walker from going over.
Coming down.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Would there be a motion then to approve that change order?
I'll make a motion that we issue a change order for the Penn and Laurel Street project in the amount of $6,114 to install a curb ramp on West Main, on the west side of the alley. I don't know the address number.
Yeah, it's, I think it's 118.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. I'll second.
All right. Been moved and seconded to approve that change order for $6,114. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item A.
Can we, can we stand that item for just a second? I do want to say, Sean did bring that in, I believe, to Mickey, and I wasn't aware of it in December, so I just found out about this when I checked into it, when Mr. Gorman called me.
Oh, okay.
So that wasn't, you know, they, they prepared it in December.
Yeah.
And I wasn't aware it was submitted. So, and then also... And I wasn't aware it was submitted. So, um, and then also the transition plan is, is still in a draft form. And one thing that, that Sean needs is direction on plugging in a number for, per year for curb ramps and sidewalks to get that completed. So that's something that, that he will need to get that completed, direction from the commission on that. We were thinking, you know, maybe fifty thousand or something, but it's just something for you to think about. We can talk about it again later. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, we need to wrap that up. How long, it's been, three or four years?
Yeah, it's been in draft form.
For information.
Yeah, what, what needs to be done is, uh, the remaining ADA projects need to be put in a schedule with a cost estimate and a schedule to complete them. You can revise that at any point. So it's kind of a living document, but we need to schedule out what remains.
And we need to get it completed. I emailed him and asked him, what do we need to get done? And that's one of the things that he, he said that he was needing direction for.
Sure. Are we on a timeline?
Not anymore. I mean, that was part of the DOJ settlement, which was closed, but, but it needs, needs to get wrapped up.
Well, if your, if your cost was into a unit, that would be reasonable, either one quarter where you're doing two or one or an intersection, instead of looking at a group of doing five hundred thousand. If you priced it so we could take the pieces and do it as budget allowed. And, and say we got twenty-five thousand one year, we could do a group there. And then we had fifty the next, we could do it. So I, I would say that the pricing needs to be something that doesn't put it into large groups, but keeps it flexible enough that as we do our budget, we can look at it and, and make our, our budget determined. Not sit back and say, well, we don't have a hundred thousand.
Right.
Say, we can do two, we can do one, we can do some.
Right.
Or just come in, even like on this where you're adding with another project, that if we come in under budget, then we could add.
Can we add it to other projects too, as, as they were to come up?
Yeah, as part of your ADA compliance process, you respond to complaints. So there needs to be some defined process in the, in that plan about how, how you do that. It's, it's wide open how you do it. It's just like Kelly mentioned, do you, do you, we budget fifty thousand dollars a year or like you described, a kind of a flexible amount. I think either's fine. It's just we, we need to put something in.
He just needs direction so he can get it done.
I mean, I'm thinking you know the budgets, you know, what we can, can afford maybe going forward. So why don't you guys work on a plan, present to us that complies with all the requirements that you've said, that twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand?
Yeah, or just keep it flexible because like on our sidewalks, we've looked at twenty-five thousand, but we've never had twenty-five thousand to do any. But here we got six thousand and we can do one. So if you can keep it manageable, that we could do one or two, any, and not just set a block number that we gotta do these. Cause when we look at a block, we get stuck with that number. But if it's six thousand and one ramp or it's twenty-four hundred and one ramp, we can see, okay, now we can do five or we can do ten. You know, we can build the scope of the project to work with the money available.
And some of them are tied in with like street projects and you'll have curb ramps done as part of that street project too, so.
So we really need to get, you know, I would say you present it in the draft form with a, a figure like we've discussed here tonight and let us look at it, then we'll give back and not put it off more, but get the draft copy presented for approval and then we'll go from there.
Okay. I'd also like to say this, this ramp you just added is part of the downtown patching project. We have a pre-construction conference next week on that, so the, the contract time on that is forty-five days. So there is going to be road closures during that period. I'll have a better idea on the contractors' traffic control and schedule after our meeting this week, but that's coming for downtown.
Do you know how many parking spaces we'll lose?
No, but I'll, I'll be able to report that back to you depending on how he, he manages his traffic control.
Who's going to notify the businesses of the schedule then after you have your pre-con?
We can prepare a door hanger type document to, to take to the, the businesses on those blocks.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to let each business owner know so they're aware. And with the pre-con, uh, next week, they probably need notice, which the paper could take care of. That general notice.
I did, I did.
In the article that she's working on reporting.
Yes, yes, generally, there will be some road closures downtown.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay. All right. Item I is consider authorizing environmental testing at the nineteen sixteen City Hall in the amount of eighty-two sixty-five plus additional analytical fees and expense, expenses for any additional samples as authorized.
This is a, Andy Pitt sent this to me and results, um, some of the things that the, one of the things that the committee had brought up was wanting to know what the environmental impacts are at that building. So they know, you know, what we're dealing with. And so this was the proposal he provided. It's for, um, the limited indoor air quality evaluation, which is the mold related testing. And then also asbestos and limited lead based paint, uh, survey. Um, there are, um, if they see some areas that they think may need some additional testing, that's what those additional fees are for. If you'd like to authorize some of that, I would suggest setting a, a maximum limit on that so that we can give them direction. If, if you wish to proceed with this, we would suggest doing that. And also the city attorney didn't like the language of their contracts. So he suggested that if you approve it, that you do it as a reimbursable with Trainer. And then that way the contracts with Trainer rather than with the city.
Yeah, it needs to go with Trainer and.
As a part of the project.
Yeah, there are, there are samples included with their eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollar quote.
Yes, those are, um, air samples. And they said if there's something that they saw or something that might need some addition, like a swab testing, then that would be for that kind of, uh, if they saw something that they thought needed additional testing.
Yeah, I think from our interview with, with Trainer, I don't see him getting carried away with testing. I, I feel comfortable allowing him to use his discretion. I don't, you know, I don't want us to set a limit and then.
And then they want to do more testing and that, then they have to come back.
Yeah.
So you just want to leave it at their discretion. If they see something, they can go ahead and test it and you're okay with the additional fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause, you know, we know there's asbestos. We know there's lead paint in there. And there, it said, I doubt if they'll get into the concealed pipes, which there's going to be asbestos in the chases. But with the number of tests that they have in the, in the, in the proposal, I don't, it'd just be an isolated case maybe.
Okay.
That they would get probably more relating to mold than the lead and.
Right.
Nineteen fifteen, you know, the first coat of paint, well, it, it's got lead.
Yeah.
And, you know, so.
And asbestos was a premium product, so.
It, it was a good product.
Yeah, real good product. Yeah. So was there a, was there a manifest on that asbestos that you're aware of? Was there?
You mean on what's already been removed?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
There should be.
Somewhere, that's what.
Yeah. Have we had any removed in the past?
I wasn't involved with it, but I, I know, I know that some has been removed in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, there should be a.
It was way back when I, I worked for, I think I worked for a different department when that happened. But, you know, they had a contractor come in and, and remove it.
Yeah, I think that was some of the questions that Andy had was where it was, how it had been removed.
I think it was mainly.
Pipe, wasn't it?
Pipe, it was pipe casings that had, you know.
First steam for the border.
Right.
What I'd suggest.
The majority of it was in the, the basement.
The boiler room.
Mm-hmm. Well, no. I mean, part of those offices down there did not have ceilings. So the, the boiler pipes, the piping was exposed back then.
Long as the jacket was maintained in good condition, it wasn't a problem.
Okay. Well, I think we need to do it, give the committee all the information, give them the tools that they need so that they can make good decisions for us.
Absolutely.
Somewhat put some of the issues to rest too for this particular project. So I'd make a motion then that we approve the eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars for additional testing to be a reimbursable expense from, to Trainer. And, uh, you're looking at me, Frank.
Well, with the, if they see other areas that they feel they need sampled.
Yeah, with.
Yeah.
With appropriate, I guess you'd say.
Discretion.
Yeah, discretion, you know, using their discretion for the additional samples or testing that they need. You got that, Mike? Did you get it? It's on tape.
I'll second.
Okay. All right.
Further discussion by anybody?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Ready to move to item J, which is consider setting the date of April sixth, two thousand seventeen at two P M. to receive bids for agricultural lease of track B at the airport consisting of approximately three hundred and twenty-seven acres. Kelly?
Um, we had received bids for this previously and we got very low bids. I checked with the extension office and they said that that was not a fair price at all. So we would like to go out for bid again. I've had some interest from people calling, asking some questions about it. So I think we will get some bids. We also have been requested to also do an alternative for a five-year lease. Um, and city staff does not have any issue with that. So we would go out for bid with a three-year option and a five-year option. And then you guys could decide what bid you wish to award once they come in. And that's our suggestion.
Okay.
We have time to get all that done by, uh, April sixth?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Mike's already working on it, so, yeah.
We need to advertise it or?
Yeah, we'll do an advertisement and, um, and then we'll get with some of the, the, the extension office and, and try to get it out to the local farmers.
I like the idea of a five-year lease, but that seems like it brings some continuity for a longer period of time.
Yeah, it would, it would. It might be more attractive because then they have a longer period of time to.
Where they can do some planting.
Yes, planting ahead.
Whatever they want to plant.
Recover their investments.
And the other side will expire, uh, in, in September of this year. So we'll be going out for a bid, bid for it later. And we could, depending on how successful this is, we could maybe do that option again.
Okay.
The, the statement that the soil's being tested, that it might need to be limed?
It does not need to be limed.
Okay.
We got the results back and we are in good shape.
I notice we have each year budget, in the budget, twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that just in case? And how does it work then when?
Well, it's also for terraces. And we just did terraces on the other side that they, I think they may even still be working on those. Um, so we usually use it for terraces or lime or, and if it's not used at the end of the year, then sometimes they'll use it for other, other equipment or things that they have out there to maintain the airport.
Okay, when we have a property leased.
Mm-hmm.
Then we still pay to lime the field?
Yes, the lease had, the old leases had a thing and where the farmer paid, uh, two dollars per acre. But to lime, and I figured it out for this tract, that through about three hundred and twenty-seven acres, you're looking at about nineteen thousand dollars to lime it. And then, so the, the farmer's paying what, six hundred and sixty dollars? A good deal for them. So, yeah, that's something we're gonna, Mike and I are gonna look at and try to.
Can we look at?
Yeah, and we're gonna.
Some sort of language to where?
We're gonna work with the extension office, um, and, and see if they can help us with some language of what standard and leases that they have for cash rent. Because most of the leases, you have a lot of leases for the, the third, two thirds thing. Well, ours is just a, a cash rent. So we're gonna work with the extension office to get that language updated. I don't think it's been changed for many years. So, um, that, that's definitely something that needs to be looked at.
Then also, why would we want to be terracing the property if we've got a lease? Why wouldn't you have maintenance of the terraces in as part of the lease too?
Well, you could. In the past several years, the city has paid for the terraces and for the, the lime.
Cause it seemed like, you know, the, the lease or is going to be
Mm-hmm.
moving the, the soil that's going to affect the terraces. So there's no, uh, there's no guarantee that they're gonna maintain them or work on in a satisfactory manner because we have to pay to rebuild them. So if, you know, if, if it's part of the lease, then care and would be given maybe more to maintain the terrace.
Put back in the same position that it was.
You know, I'm not a farmer either.
What we're gonna look at is, is putting in some language that says that they use proper farming techniques. Also, in the event, you know, it, that we have to work on the terraces, if they've done that, that's just general maintenance. We are the landowner. So we want to find out, working with the extension office, what's customary in, in leases of this nature. And, and they would be experts on that. So, uh, we want to be consistent with what the market is.
Fair. That sounds like a plan.
Yeah, it, it, you know, it seems like you've got a crossover where we're maintaining terraces on leased land that a farmer's cultivating and yet we're gonna put the lime down. How do you interface those that you don't get a conflict? You know, it, it sounds like we need to look into it a little.
And some of those, the, the landowner's responsible for the line, but the farmer's responsible for keeping it fertilized. And sometimes they, sometimes it works that way too. It just depends on how it's, how it's written.
So you'll work on contract, I mean, what we have a chance here to do is reinvent the whole wheel system.
Yeah, update it.
Update it.
Mm-hmm.
But are those conditions that need to be spelled out in the, the notice? Uh, that we're accepting bids so they'll know going in if they're gonna have to prepare or maintain the terraces or provide lime?
It'll, it'll all be in the bid package.
Okay.
It's not gonna be that difficult.
So it's like, uh, like Gary, you had the question, is April sixth, does that give enough time to get all that put together?
Does it make a difference? I mean, is it planning? Yeah, I don't know. Well, if you wait.
Probably depends on what you're planning.
Do we want to push it back another week?
I don't want you to hurry and.
We just want it done.
Well, we can. We were, we were trying to get it in for the next meeting to get approved, but we can push it back, um, the week before your, your next meeting.
Are you, are you sure you're comfortable getting it ready to go and giving them time to get their bids in? It seems like that's pretty tight to me.
Well, we can extend it out if you want. That's fine. We were just trying to get it done so they wouldn't miss any planning opportunities for, to make it attractive.
I mean, are, are they gonna miss something which will affect that?
Another week would.
I mean, they're, it's too late for wheat right now. So really you're looking at corn and, and, uh, beans. That'd be the next option. So it's coming up and it's coming up quickly. And, and if any fertilizations need, needs to be done, they'll want to get onto that. Uh, however, I, they're, they're probably all right on a timing standpoint.
If you want to extend it out, I'd extend it out. I suggest you do it to the twentieth because then you can cover it at your next meeting after that and guess it's time to review the bids.
So our meetings in April would be. I'm going to kill this one, but, uh, let's see, our meetings would be, April would be the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. So, um, you're saying accept bids the twentieth, then approve them the twenty-seventh, correct?
Right. So that gets it in our packet.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yep. Thursday, the twentieth at two P M. You can change it to that and that's, shouldn't be an issue.
I'm good with that. Are you good with that?
Yeah. I mean, we set the date of April twentieth, two thousand seventeen at two P M. to receive bids for the agricultural lease of track B at the airport.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we set the date of April twentieth at two P M. to receive bids for track B. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no opposed. Okay. Consider, item K, consider providing direction to the staff regarding the preliminary, preliminary draft of the water and sewer utility rate study. prepared by H W Lockner.
The preliminary draft study is included, the, I feel like saying the infamous study, is included in your packets for review. And there has been some questions raised on that. And we, staff would like direction if you would like to have Lockner come be available to answer questions and maybe have David Traster here at the same time, who's an expert on this, on, on these rate studies to make sure that we understand what's in that rate study and, and how they came up with the information and why the recommendations are being made. And any questions you guys may have. That's staff suggestions.
I'd like to see us do that too, because, I mean, I see these charts are wonderful, but I don't really understand them. And it'd be nice to have them explained so that you knew what the methodology was for how they came up with their numbers. You probably understand it.
Make sure we're going in the same direction.
So, you already probably understand it, but I don't. I, I'd say we have a special meeting with, and I'm thinking we get together with Lockner, David Traster, and whoever else. Terry probably we should need be there. Who else? Think of anybody?
Um, those are the key people and you guys, of course. So.
We'll be there.
Do it at a special meeting now?
Yeah.
But you're getting ready to go on vacation, correct? So, when will you be back in town or available?
First meeting's the thirteenth.
The fifth.
You'll be back the fifth? So, I can check their availability after April fifth for both of them to be here, correct? For a special meeting?
Thirteenth, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying anytime after the fifth when he's back in town. I can see, it's, it's gonna be a little bit hard to get them available.
Just don't do the, just don't do the sixth.
Don't, no?
Yeah.
The sixth, okay.
Probably be the following week.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Um, you have a meeting the thirteenth already? So, you mean the week after that?
No.
That same week of the thirteenth?
Okay.
All right.
How long you think that'd take? Couple hours? Hour? I have no idea.
Yeah, probably hour, hour and a half.
You wanna do it before the meeting? Was that push you to get back?
No. It's fine with me. Makes for a long evening, but.
It does.
Because it's, there's a lot to talk about in that report, a lot, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. We can do that to save another meeting or we can have a special meeting. The point for asking a question.
Yeah.
That week, I don't really care.
It was a special meeting you like in the morning, don't you?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we shoot for the eleventh?
The eleventh?
Yeah.
What time in the morning are you thinking?
Eight o'clock. Well, he's got, they gotta have time to get here.
They gotta travel.
Yeah.
Think like ten?
Yeah.
I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Because we will need to get it going because, as you know, we have had budgeted rate increases that we're not done and so it's causing a budget shortfall, so we don't wanna let it just keep hanging on.
Okay. All right, let us know.
I will.
Okay. Report on city projects. We're ready for reports. Report on downtown, on downtown dumpsters. Who's doing that? Mike?
Hey, Mike.
Hey. I think at the last meeting, a couple of questions come up on some dumpsters. And the first one was, do commercial customers have to buy a dumpster? If they don't generate much trash, they can utilize two thirty-two gallon cans for twenty-three seventy a month, twice a week pickup. Each initial can is fourteen thirty-three a month. And the second question was, does the city lease dumpsters? No, because we don't own them.
So, what would it take to change that policy?
You, you guys.
Would we need to buy them?
What's that?
Would we need to buy the dumpsters?
And then rent them out, charge them twenty bucks a month or whatever, so.
I mean, if that's what you wanna do.
But if they, you said they can have two trash cans?
Two trash cans if they don't generate, you know, a lot of trash. That's the smallest and you go up to six yard dumpster.
But they pick up then downtown daily with the two trash cans?
With the two trash cans, that's twice a week.
Twice a week?
Yeah, it's just like a residential.
We're recruiting vigorously for some new businesses downtown. And I've talked to two different national firms that are considering independence. And they don't wanna own the dumpsters, you know? And they're worried about liability if somebody climbs in there for the night and gets cut on glass or something. They, they would rather the city own the dumpster and just charge them monthly. So, to me, that seemed like a very reasonable request, but I didn't know why we, why we didn't do it. So, that's why I brought this up.
I don't know. It is.
So, we could do it. We just have to buy some dumpsters and start offering that as an option that this dumpster size is twenty bucks a month or so.
If you so desire.
Do you know what they cost?
Well, one yard starts out at four hundred to four hundred and fifty, depending on the gauge of the metal that you, you want. And they go up to six yards, which are over a thousand dollars.
And how long do they last?
Well, it lasts a long time, but usually the problem is rusting out because they have a plug in them.
On the bottom part, the bottom part.
You know, stuff doesn't come out of them.
Sure.
They last maybe ten years if they're taken care of before you have to put a floor in them.
So, we would need to make that an agenda item in the future and, and look at that policy and talk about adding that option for, for businesses to rent a dumpster.
So, that would just be an option and then the ones that currently own theirs, it wouldn't affect them, correct?
Right.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, we just wanna make sure we understood what, what you're saying.
Except then the maintenance becomes ours too when a lot of it rusts out.
Yeah, put floors in.
You know.
You'd have to charge enough to.
Yeah.
By the time, if it lasts ten years, you're saying? Over ten years, we gotta make sure we get enough to be able to buy replacements or do the repair.
Right.
And then if the dumpster rolls into a car.
Whoever that turns out to be.
It's ours, are we liable for damage to the car or?
Probably.
And then we might have to buy additional insurance, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think.
That's a good question.
We need to look into the, the whole, whole picture. You know, if, if it's initial cost, then the city, we could look at purchasing them and leasing them to the customer. And then after the lease is paid off, it's theirs. Then all the maintenance, all the responsibility goes on to them. And, you know, any, any damage, a wheel gets broke, which those happen quite often. You know, there's a lot of little pieces that would start causing us maintenance. But if, if it's the initial cost that was a problem to a business owner, then maybe adding it to their bill and spreading the cost out over a few months or a period of time to let them get in, get operational, get some revenue coming in, and then it becomes theirs. And then we're out of the business, but we could assist them in that initial purchase.
They just don't wanna own them, so.
I'm not sure. But, you know, the point has been made, well, if, if a wheel gets broken, we broke it. Nobody else is out there picking up the dumpster and setting it back down, so, you know.
Those still are the building or the owner's responsibility to fix.
The way it is now.
We fix the wheels now.
Yeah, sometimes we fix wheels if we, if we break one, we fix it.
Oh, okay.
Because we, you know, we did that around a little bit. But.
I got a damaged trash can there.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to replace.
We'll be right out.
Okay, anymore?
No, I'd like to sit on the agenda though.
Yeah, I think workups, a proposal and some cost and look at it from the liability standpoint.
And also, a common problem with those dumpsters is people come in and dump in someone else's dumpster. And I know you've had that happen, I mean, it's, it's.
I know it happened.
It's happened various, that's our number one complaint with those. Now, they can get a lock and lock those, you know, and the guys have a key to unlock them. So, that is an option if people want to lock their dumpsters, they can do that, so. But it is a problem. I know that Tom Schwartz was having that issue, so he put some cameras up and it kinda stopped. But it is a very common problem of people dumping in other people's dumpsters downtown, so.
Especially if it's behind a building or something.
Yeah, most of them are all in the alley, so.
Troubles with that school district and ours that school district. Okay. Plazas, or sign plants, basically, plaza and sign plant.
And you guys requested this information, so I put it in your packet. There also was a PowerPoint that I didn't have in there that I sent out earlier, but I'll, I can put it in the next packet too, that showed the kiosk and things, which is on one of those there. But they actually had planned the kiosks around the tree. I didn't really see, you know, I didn't, I didn't really see another design that they had done for that. I guess beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so.
Yeah, I thought there were some freestanding kiosks separate from that, informational centers.
Yeah, that's the only ones I saw, so. I'm sure you could do something similar to that design, just not the tree in the middle.
The group that was interested in, in helping with that, did they have primarily downtown?
They didn't say, but I'm guessing that's the case. That would make sense.
There were some banners, I think, that he looked at, so I didn't know. A lot of the signage was out on the peripheral direction to downtown where.
Right.
You know, something like a kiosk seems more appropriate downtown, one or two.
Well, if the downtown merchants wanna put in some of the signage to direct people downtown, so people realize we have it downtown, they, they just said, do we have a plan that we could just follow the plan and put in some signs at our expense? And it seems like a great idea to me, but as I remembered it, it's kind of a conceptual design. We don't really have anything firm. We don't have, you know, an architectural drawing, here's what the sign is to look like and here's how it's built. So, I don't know what the next step is on that.
Yeah, and of course, it always boils down to dollars.
Yes, but if we have people that want to spend money on the signs, I want to help them do that.
Well, and you might be able to make some of these at the Fab Lab where, you know, when this was first, you know, I think people thought about this when this first came up. And, you know, the prices for this plan was based on somebody, a company making these. And I know that they're having some signs made out of the park, just really cheaply based on making them at the Fab Lab. So, if you had a design and a template, you might be able to achieve some of this at a lower cost by utilizing that asset.
Shanu put up some new signs here recently that were directional in nature, you know, Savari Zoo or Savari Museum. And the, might be interesting to call them because they're blue signs and they're really nice. I noticed, I was just there the other day and noticed them, knowing this is gonna be on the agenda, so.
Well, I know that the Chamber talked to several sign companies when they got their new sign. And, and the zoo is working on a new sign and they've talked to companies, so.
So, we may be able to cobble together some.
Talk to some sign companies or, I don't know, local city architect, I don't know, I don't know who designs signs, but it seems like this is very manageable to me. I just don't know the next step.
I think, well, we can come up with a plan. I mean, what do you want to do?
I want city staff to solve the problem and present it to us.
Do we have any money to solve the problem with?
Well, let's get an estimate, how much would take to, to design a sign?
To have, to have somebody design it.
Come up with a standard design that we can then have different companies.
Let's get some cost numbers, let's talk to some people that have done it like Shanu.
Following this plan generally?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we paid for the plan, I mean, I think, I mean, we may be able to come up with a way to phase it in and do some different things like we did for the downtown trees and work towards maybe something every year. There's, if we put our heads together, we'll come up with something, I think. Does that help you?
Sure.
Wait, job security. So, I get you where, is that? All right, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
I had a extra one to.
Okay.
Throw in here. And I forgot to put it in the packet and my thing won't change. Being contrary here. There we go. The next recycling on April first, the county got the grant, I think I mentioned this previously, but I just wanted to remind everybody. They will take up to seven light vehicle tires at recycling. The other locations in the county are nine to noon, but Western Surrall redoing recycling from eight to noon. Or in Independence, it'll be eight to noon. And they can bring their light vehicle tires up to seven. If they have more than seven, they have to sign an affidavit on that. So, that is the grant the county got. And then whatever the grant doesn't cover, the county has agreed to pick up that cost to dispose of those tires. So, this is a great opportunity to get rid of some of those tires. And if people have neighbors or things that have them, and maybe they don't have any way to get them there, maybe help them out. And, and, I mean, it's a, a good opportunity to clean up the alleys and different things and get rid of some of those tires that are sitting around.
You can make more than one trip. Seven the first time.
If it's more than seven and it's the same tag number, you have to sign the affidavit. It, they have to track all of these that they get and report back, it's part of the grant requirements. Scott Barnhart was telling me about it. They have to, they have to track all of this. So.
Okay. All right. So, April first, Saturday, April first, from nine to noon?
Well, eight to noon in Independence.
Eight to noon? Okay.
It's nine to noon if you wanna take it to one of the other cities.
There we go.
And then Lisa Helkenberg wanted to visit with you for just a second about an emergency services appreciation dinner.
Oh, okay.
I don't see her.
Is she here?
Oh, Lisa Wilson, sorry. Wrong Lisa.
Okay.
So, we have decided at the Chamber that we're going to help coordinate a appreciation dinner for the Independence Fire and EMS and the Independence Police and Dispatch. And we've selected the day of Friday, May the fifth, and we're going to utilize the Civic Center. And we have a caterer. And what we're going to be doing is extending this opportunity to the citizens of Independence to be able to allow everybody to contribute to the cause. We all appreciate greatly what the Fire and EMS and the police do for us to protect and to serve us. And I think that it falls right in line with Love Independence, which will be on the thirtieth. This will be the next week. And it's a great way for all of us as citizens, we know the business community will contribute, but also the citizens to be able to just, you know, write a check for ten or fifteen dollars and pay for a fireman to be able to come together and have a night of fellowship and fun and enjoyment. And they would all congregate in the Civic Center and it would strictly just be David Cowan and all of his employees and those departments.
Families.
No, not in families, and guests. They would be able to invite one, one person to be their guest. So, we're estimating at around, correct me, but sixty employees and, and doubling that for the guests. So, what we're doing is we're going to be sending out a flash through the Chamber of Commerce, putting it on Facebook. We're gonna talk about it at First Friday. And we're going to put something in the newspaper and just make it available to everybody in the community to be able to give to the cause and hopefully we'll be able to raise enough money to offset the costs of the dinner. And I'm optimistic that that's exactly what will happen.
Okay. Great. That's exciting.
So, do we need to act on this? Or is this just informational?
Just informational. We're not asking for anything, just wanted to let you know that we're going to do it.
You're gonna do it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Don't want your permission.
Okay. Any other reports then?
No.
Okay. Commission comments? Leonard? Got it? Any commission comments this time?
Yeah. We were looking at the special use sales tax and, and the bond last time, and we're approaching budget. You know, I mentioned we had bonds for twenty years. And our special use sales tax, that was a ten-year tax. We financed some of the, the bonds. We financed some of the, the bonds from that money. And then one of the items was for debt reduction. Well, we're halfway through the life of the special use sales tax, and to renew it, I believe it'd have to go to a vote. So I think as we're looking at budgeting coming up, and then the, the future years, in the five years that are left, we need to look, how are we going to service those bond payments after the sales tax expires? It'd be, in five years, then we make a decision, do we try and reissue the special use sales tax? But if it doesn't pass, we need to start looking now, I think, at, at a plan of what, what bonds are being funded by that? Which are we just supporting, which are going to mature before the end? And then get a plan of attack to servicing the bonds after the five years, just so we're ready.
Makes great sense.
Yeah, and. Mike, you'd have to look, there may be some bonds retiring.
Yeah.
Or something in there that helps that as well, because some of those bonds go way back, I know. Okay?
And then with the special use sales tax, look at, you know, like the water treatment plant, I know there's that shortfall, but we've got the building and facility improvement that if we're generating five hundred thousand a year for that, maybe instead of waiting for a bond, if we could start breaking down some of the repairs, like the electrical distribution panels, the main distribution panels, that could be a project, it could be within the five hundred thousand. That's not going to depend on the others, but it's a standalone. You know, setting up the transfer switch and the electrical connection for a generator, that could be done without going to a bond. Generator, I don't know, we might be looking at fifty to seventy thousand dollars for a large generator, but we could look in pieces and be getting there, because, you know, we're on borrowed time with the distribution center, and just to wait, we, we could start using some of that money to address some of the issues out there at a little at a time.
Well, you also have that low interest revolving loan fund, that's very, very low interest. And we brought that to you previously to see if you wanted to at least get it established, so that you could borrow it. It wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be required to borrow anything from it at that time, but we could go ahead and get that set up. But that's a funding option for that, that's very low interest, and we need to redo that one, because the one we have is so old. But that could be an option for funding that project as well.
But if we can use some money out of money we've already generated, then we get more, because we're not paying interest with that money. And if it could be small enough, you know, the projects don't all have to, they're not all tied together that they all have to be done at once. So we could be addressing some of the issues without borrowing money, and then give us our indebtedness, our bond, our debt limit, still open, available, even though, you know, it's kind of questionable with the revenue, but the addressing utilities doesn't count against our debt limit, I believe. But it still comes back around, we have to raise rates to cover the interest in that account. But it's, it's money we're, we're already generating that we're not using when we have definite needs that need to be addressed in that category.
Well, this study committee that we have for infrastructure, that's something I hope that they look at, too. What are the potential funding options that are available for the water plant? Roads, streets, sewer, water, you know, they, I mean, we just approved, looking at City Hall. This is, as we've talked millions of times here, this is all one big pet, one big package here that hopefully they'll, I mean, they're working hard, they're, you know, asking for good information, I think.
As long as that's put out there, because it's, the money has been there, and we've had needs, but we haven't addressed the needs. And, you know, to be proactive.
Yeah, that's what this committee's doing, I hope. I mean, this is what, to me, that's what the whole purpose for setting up that committee was, is they'll look at this, help us prioritize, because essentially, it comes up with, it's a plan. It's a strategic plan that, you know, we're accused of not having, now we'll have it, so. Okay. You think tonight? I don't have anything either. Public concerns, we have one from an Angela Standbridge. Is that correct? Stan?
Ridge. Standbridge.
Standbridge, okay. Here we go. You can see, you can see you have three minutes.
I'm Angela Standbridge, and I'm here because I want to bring a small business to town, but it is not in a building, it is on a trailer. And I fall in a little bit of a loophole, because I don't qualify for one of your licenses, but I do qualify for another license, but it's paid for, it's a license I have to pay for every three days. So if I'm wanting to be here for six months, it gets pretty costly to buy a license every three days. So I am coming to you to try to find out if there's a way that we can come up with a, some kind of a license for a business that I would be bringing in a travel trailer that would be more permanent, but mobile. Where do, I want to make sure I'm saying the right words, right. I did all the legwork to get it here. I'm ready to come. I just need to get what needs to be done with you guys. So other than that, that's all I have to bring to you. I'm ready to work with you and do what I need to do, but I just need to be able to come into town, and that's one of my stipulations I have to get done. So thank you, guys, for listening to me.
Thanks. Okay. Executive sessions, we have two. We'll have a non-elected executive session, we'll also have attorney-client executive session. How long you think we need for the attorney-client? Fifteen minutes, ten minutes?
Fifteen minutes, probably.
Fifteen? Okay. So we'll make a motion, then I make a motion that we go into executive session for fifteen minutes for attorney-client privilege. In the executive session will be Kelly Commissioners and Cole Hofmeister. Anybody else need to be in there? No?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be back at.
Three after.
Yep, three after. Now, ready to go into executive session for non-elected personnel. Let's make that ten minutes, and the Commissioners will be in there for that one, okay? So I'd make a motion, we go into executive session for ten minutes.
Second.
And all those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Stand ready, we might come get you. Okay, we are back in open session. Be no action in the executive session, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signal five by saying aye, go home and watch KU.
Aye.
Go Jayhawk. Even though I'm a K Stater, we're going Jayhawk. Did you get that on tape, Larry?